Hey, DeShaw, Bill Mendez again. Just want to make sure you got the email inviting you to the to the special meeting tonight. If not, you can call in and then we can promote you to a participant. Take it easy. We'll wait a minute or two. Bye bye. I think he's here. He's he's masquerading as me.
I don't know why it says your name or mine.
Well, because I sent you my my invite.
Okay.
Probably. Are you going to be on video?
Yes, I'm about to turn my video on now. I am so sorry.
Okay, well, I think we're pretty much all here. Like to call this special meeting to order. The Charlottesville Police Civilian Oversight Board during this meeting is going to conduct a prehearing conference related to Internal Affairs case twenty twenty dash zero zero one five and a review request for that case. Actually, the plaintiff has not yet logged in. He is there. I will. Ms. Rice?
Yes.
Can you promote Jeffrey Fogle, please?
Yes, I can.
Good evening, Mr. Fogel.
Hi, you're you're muted.
Yes, good evening.
All right. Okay, I guess we can begin now on we had for this meeting put together an agenda on the assumption that the board chair myself would be the presiding individual on the advice of counsel. However, it has been strongly recommended to me that our hearing examiner take over in that capacity if he wishes to do so.
I think that would be me. I'll introduce myself. My name is Cecil Creasy. I am an administrative hearing officer who serves on the cadre of the Virginia Supreme Court list of administrative hearing officers. And I am private practitioner attorney. I'm not a state employee. I can serve in this capacity. For many different state agencies who require hearing officers to conduct formal hearings in whatever context that might occur. I was approached just a few days ago, I guess, on assignment from the Supreme Court to see if I was available to join and serve in in this forum, and I agreed to do that. And I understand that this is the board's first preview hearing perhaps. And I have reviewed ordinances that have been sent to me. I don't have any context whatsoever of what the complaint is. The only material I've seen and have been provided either written or in any in any way is the ordinances and the board procedures that exist and the reference to the hearing examiner, which is the role I would have. And it's very nonspecific on my role, quite frankly. Mr. Mendez, thank you. And I understand from your comments that you're the chair of the Oversight Board. Is that right?
Yes, I I am. And shall we have the rest of the board introduce introduce themselves?
I would welcome that. And I I don't even have your draft agenda. So that's
Wow, okay.
From. So I don't necessarily have anything to to spring off of.
Let me I can. I may be able to share. I'm notoriously bad at it, but let's see what I got here. Is that visible?
That is visible. I can see that. Yes.
So, yeah, that's so that was the that was the thought that essentially we would introduce ourselves, you know, identify the governing documents, talk about the talk about the hearing procedures and and the roles of the various parties and representatives. And then at the end, you know, discuss questions and concerns. So if you want that for your for your enjoyment.
Well, I may be the one person who doesn't know most or all of the participants. I would welcome the introductions. That would that would be all right.
Okay, I would like to introduce James Watson, who is the co-chair. And then he can say a few words about himself and then pass it off to someone else.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Mr. Creasy, for jumping in and taking on this opportunity to work with us. Again, my name is James Watson. I've been in Charlottesville for about thirty years. I love the city. I want to see the best for the city. And been a part of this since since this version of the board got started in probably about the early summer of twenty twenty, and it's been a long, interesting road. And just looking forward to being able to continue to do this work. And you know, we've been doing a lot in the background to, you know, get the ordinance and everything approved and in line with because when we started, the governor hadn't really passed anything that really gave boards very much power. So kind of jumping back, it's been been a long road and just, you know, kind of glad we're getting to where we are and able to, you know, work more work more effectively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Good evening, Mr. Creasy. I'm Jeff Fraser. I am one of the citizen members appointed by city council. I came on board in February of twenty one, so about a year and a half ago. As you know, this is our first hearing. We've had a couple of mock hearings just to get up to speed. I am a retired forensic psychologist, which is, I think, partly why I was approached about this, just because I've had forty years of experience with law enforcement, with the criminal justice system, and I'm passionate about social and racial justice. And so that package sort of brought me to this this board. And we spent the last year and a half really getting things up to speed, as James said, by getting the ordinance worked out, negotiating for hours with counsel to get an ordinance which we thought had adequate teeth in it. And here we are getting ready to to launch. So thank you for your help.
Nancy?
Thank you. My name is Nancy Carpenter. Been here since the inception of this board. I'm part of the Social Justice Chair. I represent the National Lawyers Guild as a citizen participant. And I do have a question regarding this particular person that's brought forward the or the person that was involved in the incident, because I have had conversations with them regarding homelessness and regarding housing, not recently, but certainly subsequent to this particular incident. And how I feel about the criminalization of homelessness, I will be recusing myself from the hearing. I think that would be in my best interest and live up to the truth that I have. So sorry to take so long, but I wanted to. I didn't really see a good point in the order of the agenda to bring this up.
Well, no, thank you. I think that's very much in the spirit of the idea that the board has to be biased and have the appearance of being unbiased. And I think the scrupulousness there is very is very good for for you. Bellamy?
Yes, I'm Bellamy Brown. I've been, I guess, with the board since August of twenty twenty, originally from Charlottesville. Spent quite a while in the DC area. Had my own, I guess, incident with Fairfax County Police Department, which kind of informed how I go about, you know, serving here. And, yeah, I mean, I just I'm happy to give back to those that I've grown up with here in this community due to the fact that a lot of the challenges do happen in the brown and black spaces.
Okay, and now here's an introduction for all of us. Mr. DeShaw Cooper has just joined the board as of last month. So have not met him. Mr. Cooper, you have anything you want to say?
Hey, everybody doing? Like you said, my name is DeShaw Cooper. I actually work for the city too as well. I'm also co-chair of the Charlotte Democratic Party. I'll be following the footsteps of Nancy. I'm gonna actually step away from this too as well, just because I haven't dissected all of the procedures and everything. And I don't think it's fair for me to have an input into this without having to, you know, dissect everything that this board has done.
All right. Well, thank you, DeShaw. I think that's entirely understandable. And we have also one more member, Deidra Gilmore, who apparently is not here tonight. She is a lifelong resident of Charlottesville. And she may be able to join us later. And now I guess we can introduce the parties. Chief Durant, would you like to say something?
Good afternoon. My name is Latroy Durant. I'm the acting chief of police. I've been in this role for a short period of time. I've been working for the police department, though, however, for almost thirty two years. So hopefully, we can work in a partnership to make sure we hold our offices accountable and and be transparent when we go through a process that's fair and equitable on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. And and, you know, thank you for cooperating with us in providing the internal affairs files for our review. Sergeant Wade? There we see here. Am I missing something?
I think you muted Wade.
Derek, Derek, no.
Bill, I'm not seeing Sergeant Wade on.
Yeah, I'm not either.
List.
We can come back as I oh, there you go.
I can see I can see him. I just can't hear him talking.
Okay.
Yeah, you're you're not muted, but you're not coming through.
Hey, Wade, try to come back, go out and come back in and maybe they they can make you back into a panelist.
All right, Mr. Fogel, who is the complainant?
Yes.
Would you like to introduce yourself or tell us how to get involved with us?
I have lots to say, but I'll wait until this.
All right. Very good. And I understand that the that's Greg. Okay. Sergeant Wade, which is he's signed his signed on and still said to muted to be muted. Unfortunately, not and not muted and still not not coming through.
Mendez?
Yeah, sure.
I was gonna say, perhaps Durant would be willing to introduce Sergeant Wade and describe his role in the proceedings until you're able to get him on.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. Chief?
Sergeant Wade is he's in charge sergeant in our Internal Affairs Investigations Division. He will be presenting the facts and 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 PowerPoint for the hearing come Thursday. And he'll give the rundown of the process.
All right. And as I understand it, the then we're supposed to also introduce counsel. I understand that the city attorney is is not here tonight. Our counsel is represented by Cynthia Hudson and Pamela O'Barry.
Good evening to all assembled. As Chairman has indicated, Cynthia Hudson with Sands Anderson engaged as outside counsel to the board in connection with the exercise of its hearing authority in this proceeding and its dispositional authority. Pass Pam to introduce herself directly.
Good evening. I'm Pam O'Barry, and I am a colleague at Sands Anderson with Cynthia, and I am in the same capacity representing the board as Cynthia's.
And let me just say for the clarification of all assembled and certainly you, Mr. Hearing Examiner, Mr. Mr. Creasy, at least in terms of division of responsibility, it will only be one of us who's actually actively representing the board in the proceeding. And that will be myself this time. And one of us will and Pam will observe.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I guess we've introduced ourselves. So, Mr. Hearing Examiner, you can
See somebody else. Mr. Martin?
Yes, I am not sure that he is a participant.
He may have been promoted by accident when you were trying to do.
I believe that was I believe that was the case. Yes.
So that's someone's on who wasn't expected to be on. Is that?
Well, you can, you know, you can be, you can listen, or you can be promoted to a participant. And when we promoted Mr. Fogel, we apparently automatically promoted Mr. Martin as well.
All right. Just point of clarification, Mr. Creasy, the board is a public body is in an open meeting. Therefore, the public may attend. But the panelists who are able to to speak in connection with the proceeding are the those who've been quote unquote promoted as as panelists. So there are a number of attendees who are not also participants.
Understood. Thank you for that. All right. Well, Mr. Mendez, you're the board chair.
Would you would you like me to continue to go through the the items in the agenda?
Well, I I mean, I can do it, but it's not my agenda. And I I don't have any pride of speaking. So I'm happy for you to to continue with the agenda.
All right, that's thank you very much. Assuming our lawyers have no objections, I'll continue. Just to review very quickly, this hearing is being governed by three documents. The twenty twenty one ordinance, the board interim hearing procedures, both of which have been approved by the city council and something that's not in there, which is the standard operating procedures, which deliver the responsibilities of the board and the police department when when sharing information. I believe all the parties have access to all three of these documents. And if you don't, let me know. We'll make sure that you have.
And again, once again, point of clarification, Mr. Chair, those standard operating procedures of the police department are going to be evidentiary in nature as opposed to controlling laws such or controlling procedurally. There'll be a substantive consideration in terms of their application.
All right. Why don't we very quickly go through what we had planned as essential as the hearing procedures, the order of the hearing. Let me go to another document. So this is a the doc agenda as has been posted right now for the hearing on Thursday evening. We will have the call to order. This is will be again an open meeting. So we will undertake the housekeeping duty of approving the agenda and discussing changes if people wish to to propose any. We will then convene a review hearing, which will be presided over by Mr. Creasy. The A through G in terms of what will happen next are taken out of the two documents, the two sort of controlling documents that we have. And in terms of what the general order of you know, the proceedings will be. And so we start off with whatever motions and requests are made by the parties. We, at that time, as a board, have the option to accept, reject, or table the motions and requests until later. Then the idea is that we will hear from first from the complainant and then from the Charlottesville Police Department representative. And from the end, if so, the complainant, the only thing that they're required to do under the law is to state it clearly what the basis for their review request is. And when they are finished making their statement, the board, under our governing documents, is allowed to ask questions and other parties to the hearing may submit written questions to the hearing examiner, who will then decide whether they will be posed to the complainant or not, based on their, based on his judgment, essentially of their relevance and pertinence. And if the complainant has any witnesses, and I do not know whether they do, they would also be heard at this time with same followed by the same questioning procedures. After the complainant and the complainant's witnesses are done, we'll then hear from the Charlottesville Police Department representatives summarizing the internal affairs investigation. Again, the there will be another questioning session with the board asking questions and the other parties submitting questions to the hearing examiner. Then we would allow then we are required to allow closed arguments. And at that point, the board will begin deliberations. The the way that we have done deliberations in our mock hearing is for the hearing examiner to solicit comments from each of the board members, just to make sure that there are you know, that everyone's opinions are represented. And then the hearing examiner will vote on the what our findings should be. And of course, in the twenty twenty one document, we have three in twenty twenty one ordinance, we have three possible findings. We can agree with the findings of the internal affairs investigation. We can find that the conclusion of the investigation is not consistent with the facts reasonably available to the CPD. Or finally, we can find that the investigation was incomplete or defective. And the prescribed standard of judgment in this case is preponderance of evidence. More likely than not, board members can, I presume, abstain if they can't make up their minds. But other than that, the the votes will be public and recorded. And after that, I would expect the hearing examiner, if in his judgment it's necessary to summarize the findings of the board. And then the drafter of the board's review report, which probably will be me, will discuss what I intend to put in the report and what the format is. At this point, I believe the format is going to be very similar to the civilian review panel reports from Fairfax County. And we will also, at this point, make very take pains to make sure that we have heard from dissenting individuals if if there are if one if they want to have a minority report. heard from dissenting individuals, if, if there are, if one, if they want to have a minority report, we will make sure that that is included in our findings. And at that point, I believe we will adjourn the review hearing and adjourn board meeting. So that's kind of our plan. And I don't know, I guess at this point, we could throw the floor open to questions related to the procedures. If anyone has any.
Are, are we looking at both allegations, or is it just the unfounded?
Looking at both, both allegations. Also, I should, one thing I, I'm very one thing I didn't mention is the physical setting for the hearing, which is in City Space. This will be a hybrid, in-person streamed event. City Space is around the corner from City Hall, the corner of Fifth Street and the Mall. And we have had to propose a safety plan, which requires us to maintain six-foot social distancing, and it strongly recommends that attendees wear masks. There, because of the social distancing requirements, there's only room for about eighteen members of the public in the hearing room, but the streamed proceedings will also be shown in an outer room, so there will be more seats available there. And also, it will be streamed, live streamed as, on Zoom, as far as I understand it, at the same time, so. Okay. So I guess I'm assuming that there aren't any more questions about.
Mr. Mendez, you, you were mentioning they have the hearing examiner approve the questions to the witnesses.
Yes.
All right. And would you anticipate those questions to be submitted in writing, or?
Yes. So the people who can ask questions directly are the board members.
Yes.
And again, as, as hearing examiner, presiding officer, you can interrupt. If you feel a question is, is not pertinent, not relevant, or inflammatory, or, or whatever. You know, you're you, you have expertise here, and, and we want you to be you know, to, to make sure that due process is afforded to all parties.
I have a question.
Yes.
How do you expect the complainant to submit questions in writing when the question arises during the course of the examination of a witness at the hearing?
I would imagine it could be as simple as we'll provide you with a pad.
Is that funny, Mr. Frazier? Is that funny? I missed the joke. Maybe you could share it. Mr. Frazier, you there?
I'm here.
Mr. I missed the joke. Maybe you could share it.
Mr. Fogel, Mr. Fogel, I, I don't believe that he intended any.
You don't know anything, Mr. Mendez, so let him speak for himself if he can.
I have no comment.
You cannot speak for yourself. I expected as much. So if we were to do it, we write it down and what, just hand it to the hearing officer? Is that what you're contemplating?
Yes.
Occurred to me that no mention has been made yet of any time limits. Is the I haven't seen any reference to time limits. Is it?
We have, yeah, again, it's unfortunately, it's up to the hearing examiner to set a reasonable time limit. And so it's kind of up to your judgment as to, you know, how long the opening statement should be. And how long the closing statement should be. We can discuss that right now if you would like.
Well, that might, that might present some order and some, you know, people who are planning to make those presentations, give them some idea of, of how much time. My experience is that there, there really is sort of a reasonable time imposed on opening statements and such. And I would, I personally would welcome any, any, any member here to to propose a time limit for discussion and consideration.
Mr. Fogel, how long would you, do you think you would need for your, your opening statement?
Well, less than ten minutes.
And are you going to be presenting any witnesses?
Aside from myself?
Yes.
And documents?
Yes.
Videos?
I am assuming that, well, are these videos that have not been previously made public?
One of them.
Well, can you do, do all of this in twenty minutes?
I think so, as long as the videos are available and, and queued up to the right place.
All right, so you will need to coordinate with me and the, and Ms. Rice to make sure the video is queued up.
And that we have it, because one video, the police department refused to show me.
Well, that's still a confidential document then, so you're not going to see it.
Is that the position of the board, is that the complainants may not see the video of the relevant evidence of their complaint? Is that the position of the board?
You can ask questions about the, what the video, available videos show. You can ask questions about what the interview with the subject officer discussed. But yes, that is our, our policy at this point, is that videos that have not been made public will remain confidential.
Why? If they have factual information that's relevant to your determination, why would you keep them from yourselves and from the general public?
We're not.
Reason could you possibly have?
We're not keeping them from ourselves. We're reviewing everything.
Why would you keep it from the public and from the complainant?
Because we have agreed to maintain confidentiality as the, as the condition for seeing the internal affairs files.
This was not produced by internal affairs. This is a video taken by a citizen. There is no reason why that video shouldn't be available to me as the complainant and to the public as well. And you have no reason to deny that to me and to the public. Unless, of course, you want to hide the truth. Now, there are some people here I know want to hide the truth. But if you don't want to hide the truth, if you believe, as you say, in transparency, if you believe, as you say, that the hearing officer is here to ensure due process and transparency, then do it. Due process and transparency. There is no reason to withhold that video upon which the police department made certain determinations. And it would severely prejudice any complainant to be denied, denied the very material that the police rely on to make their determination. In fact, it would be outrageous.
Yeah, Sergeant Wade, I don't know.
And if I may, is this the Sergeant Wade who was disciplined for trying to convince somebody not to file a complaint with the review board? Is that the same Sergeant Wade? Oh, the answer is yes, but irrelevant, okay? To you, Bill, irrelevant to you, but not to the rest of us. Nor apparently to the police department that disciplined him.
Ms., yeah, Ms. Hudson?
Just two points, if I may, with, with your permission. One is that certainly with respect to the, the tenor of the pre-conference hearing, pre-hearing conference, excuse me, and the hearing itself one on Thursday, you and the hearing examiner are certainly empowered to do what's necessary to maintain the quorum in respect for the tribunal that you are in adjudicating this complaint. Secondly, with respect to decisions regarding whether or not certain information provided confidentially to the board by the police department is governed specifically by provisions of a standard operating procedure that I'm not sure has been mentioned yet. And that is the Police Department SOP Regarding Records for Hearings to Review IA Investigations by CPD, effective date March 1, 2022. And that's policy number CPD slash PCRB dash zero one. I believe that policy has been provided to Mr. Creasy as the hearing examiner and certainly should be provided as well to, to Mr. Fogel if he doesn't have it. But, but there's certainly certain decisions that the board is empowered to make with respect to the disclosure, public disclosure in such a proceeding as this of what are otherwise confidential police investigative records. It sounds as if Mr. Fogel is indicating that the video he's asking about was not one produced by or compiled by or provided to the police department other than through his own production, which might be a factor in how the board decides to whatever decision the board decides to make about public disclosure of that video. And I just offer that for your formation and consideration.
Yeah, I'd also, one of the questions I was also going to ask at this point was whether the police department representative is going to present any video evidence as part of their presentation. For, we know, for example, that one you know, one long video has already been made public. And you know, it's, you know, you're going to go beyond that at all, or what's the deal?
Are you all able to hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Great. Yes, to answer your question, we're going to, in our presentation, show the initial video that came in with the complaint as well as the officer's body worn camera video from that same time frame.
So I think that answers, yeah, no, Nancy, yeah, Nancy has her hand up.
My, my, my question was answered by Sergeant Wade to ensure that both of those videos, as referenced by Mr. Fogel, will be introduced, because I too want, you know, transparency, because we have to legitimize ourselves and to have, I don't know, to, to, to not have that second video that he was speaking about not available is highly questionable for me. I know I've recused myself, but it's still going to make a comment.
And, and, and just again, point of order, if I may, Mr. Chair, members who have recused themselves at, at this point really they are recused for all purposes.
So James, you also had your hand up?
Yeah, so just to double check here. We're on the same page. So there, there's a, there's the video that the citizen took on a downtown mall, as, as I understand and remember. And I think that made it to social media. Then there's a body worn camera video. Now, is there another video beyond that from another citizen?
Yeah, that's was, I was, I was slightly confused, because I wasn't, I wasn't a hundred percent sure that the video that Mr. Fogel was referring to was the one that accompanied the complaint.
Would you like to explain?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me?
You'd like me to explain to you what happened? That would be the simplest since I know.
Okay, go.
I supplied the video that had been taken by somebody on the downtown mall. In that video, I observed that there was a woman seated at one of the cafes immediately adjacent to where the incident took place, and that she was filming it with her with her phone. I pointed that out to Lieutenant Gore and said it would be important to get that video, because it was the closest to the scene as to whether or not there was excessive force. The police department released the body cam video of the officer. The video that was taken by the woman in the cafe outdoors has never been shown to me, but was relied on by the police department in making their determination. So there are three videos, two of which I've seen, one of which I have not, which is the one upon which they relied to make their decision.
Well, I'm not sure which one they actually relied on to make their decision, but it sounds like we're going to see at least, we're going to make at least, see at least two of these.
I can tell you that Lieutenant Gore told me that that was the video he relied on.
So so Sergeant, is that video also going to be available?
Yes, the, all the videos that were compiled over the course of our investigation were included in the packet of audio visual materials, if you will, that were included with the case file.
But that, the, the issue of the woman sitting very near to the encounter is, did she actually submit a video?
I believe so. I know that there are videos separate from the two that I spoke of earlier, that I, as I said, were included in the packet of stuff, the case file that was submitted to the board.
So it sounds like Sergeant Wade, that your presentation is going to be fairly heavily reliant on body cam videos. That you're going to be showing a fair number of them, and, and they're fairly long, so you're certainly going to need more than twenty minutes. Which is, yes?
I was going to say, I think with the, the presentation to include video footage, I'll come in right around thirty minutes.
Okay.
Jim Mendez, are you speaking of time for opening statements or time for presentation of entire case?
Well, we only have, what we have in our
I'm just asking because I thought that the question that had been posed was how much time does each side need for opening statements? But I may have missed a beat, sorry.
Yeah, I think that the count, the hearing procedures that we have right now call for opening statements. They do not differentiate unless I'm very mistaken between, you know, opening statements and presenting their case.
But that differentiation may be made by, by the board, is all I'm suggesting. The, the opening statement has a particular character, and then there's presentation of the so-called case in chief. And if, if you're suggesting that they should all be one thing, obviously, that's the board's prerogative. I was, once again, just stating this for clarity for all, all involved.
Well, I was speaking for myself. I was initially asking a question about opening statement. I envisioned the parties that, the parties of interest would present an opening statement. But I'm, the, the, the procedures are not, this, this hearing officer's procedures, I'm, I understand that the, it's the board's procedure, so I, I thought it would be nice for the present, presenters as well as the board to have some idea and to contain the time involved, and so everyone could be efficient in presenting their argument and their case.
So you would suggest having relatively short opening statements and then presentation of evidence?
I think that, that would, I, I personally think that would add to the order of the hearing. That way, the public could hear an overview of what what they're, what's going to come out. And then And then everyone is sort of prepared for what to expect.
So how about, I proposed this to the, to the parties, say, a five minutes each for opening statements. And then twenty minutes to half an hour for presentation of evidence. Each.
Well, speaking for myself, that sounds very reasonable. But I would like to hear from Mr. Fogel and
I just as soon, I just as soon skip the opening statement and go right into the narrative of what happened.
Well, that's also a question of who, who is gonna go first? Have we, have, have we who would present the case first?
Decision that, that, that can be made here or that you could impose, Mr. Creasy, I'm not sure if you and City Attorney Lisa Arbison have had an opportunity to speak at any length, but in the documents, the governing authorities that she's provided you, there is language that indicates that you have the authority to impose particular procedures, as long as they are generally in line with what's contemplated by the hearing procedures. Again, just offering that for your consideration.
I appreciate that. And I did have an introduction to the case from City Attorney Lisa. And I will say that she was very, very careful not to provide me any substantive detail of what this hearing even entails. Basically, it was to make sure I was available, knew what time, as she forwarded the ordinance and the board's hearing procedures. And that's pretty much all I have. Ms. Hudson, I think you mentioned internal affairs or a police procedure that you thought I may have been provided. I had not, I had not been provided.
I'll certainly make sure that you have it. This is a procedure that, I brought it up in the context of the discussion about what videos or perhaps other documents in the investigative internal affairs file would be publicly disclosed in this proceeding. The policy that I referenced governs very generally the use by the PCOB of documents provided confidentially to them by the police division. And then kind of in tandem with that, there's a provision of the governing ordinance that speaks to the chief of police being the ultimate arbiter of what documents get publicly disclosed in connection with this, with these kinds of proceedings. Particular, it says, the chief of police, as a custodian of the original records, of which copies may be provided to the board by the department, shall be responsible for decisions as to whether copies of such records or information contained in them may be publicly disclosed. And then it references the development of that standard operating procedure. But at the same time, there's also language that indicates that the board may vote with respect to the public use of the information that the chief ultimately kind of makes subject to this public process. So it's, 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 it's a untested, but, but that's the, that's the kind of coordination between police department and PCOB that's contemplated by these governing documents that are supposed to complement each other.
All right. Well, let me just ask for clarity for my purposes and maybe that would help everyone. The video that we, I guess, have some discussion about is the from the woman at the cafe. Her video is going to be presented. I'm not clear. It's being withheld or it was I don't know if Mr. Fogel got a clear answer. I didn't get a clear answer on whether that was going to be an issue. Maybe we can save some time on Thursday's hearing if we address that now.
Yes, so the, the two videos that I'm utilizing in my presentation are the initial video from, I believe it was Instagram of the encounter, as well as the officer's body worn camera footage from the encounter. Those are the two that I'm going to show in the presentation.
And so you're not intending to use the the video from the woman in the, in the restaurant?
That is correct.
That then is the video about which the board needs to make a decision, the quorum of the board that is able to vote, given their recusals, would need to make a decision with respect to Mr. Fogel's request regarding his ability to introduce that video. He's put that question before the board.
Yeah, James.
I mean, it seems like he would want to see that before the trial. Right? Like, or not, I don't know, it's not a, I'm a hearing, but I mean, are we saying you know, we're voting so that it can be displayed at the hearing or he can have a couple of days to look at it? You know, prior.
I think that's a very good suggestion. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, all right.
If I could speak, I think I might be able to help on this a little bit. I think in the file itself, it does mention this particular, this particular female does say that her view was obstructed, but it doesn't, I believe it mentions anything about an actual video.
Well, is the question, is there a video? I mean,
From my recollection, the file itself, it says that she was sitting across, she was looking at it, her part of her view was obstructed, but there was no mention of a video that she had taken.
Yeah, and I think that is not too difficult, too different from my impression. I thought that that was while Lieutenant Gore had contacted the woman and taken a statement from her, that I don't think he got a video. Perhaps Greg, you can, you know, confirm, confirm that for us?
I can't remember the exact chain of events. I know that there are videos included in the file that are not the two that I'm using. They were bystander videos. If I remember correctly, just based solely on the viewpoint the videos are taken from and recalling, seeing the woman that Mr. Fogel referenced in the Instagram video, it looked like that video matched with where she would have been standing filming. And as I said, that video was included in the case file.
And now it seems to me that, well, you know, we can vote to you know, to give this file. But it seems to me that the police could simply agree to do it.
I just wanted to add one more point that, as Pam has pointed out, Miss O'Berry has pointed out regarding, and I'm not exactly clear which video or other electronic information might be introduced on, on either side, but one point that it's clear to make is that it's very it's an absolute in the ordinance, there's certain information that is not to be made available or disclosed in this public proceeding, and that's personal information. A person, personally identifiable information about witnesses as it relates to telephone numbers and home addresses and those kinds of things. There, there are varying types of information that might be presented here. And if any of that is present in the video that Mr. Fogel was talking about, I just wanted you to keep that in mind as part of your disposition of his request.
Well, maybe, and again, this is something of a something of a procedural complexity, but perhaps what we can do is within the next twenty-four hours ascertain whether this video is actually in the file. And then if it is, provide it to the plaintiff. Then if it's not, we can explain that it's not. Bellamy, just raise your hand again.
Yes, so I think the other videos that Sergeant Wade was referencing were taken by a couple that was in front of Citizen Burger, and I think there was reference to four in particular there, but there was no reference to the actual female who was standing across with the view obstructed.
Well, let me let me confirm that within the next twenty-four hours and report to all parties. And do I need to get a vote to, then if it does exist, provide it to Mr. Fogel?
Yes, a vote would be required for it to be a board action.
Jeff, you had your hand up there.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I was just gonna suggest that we go ahead and vote on releasing it in, in the event that it exists. Mr. Fogel, having made such a strident point about the importance of it, I think it would be a, not a good precedent to set to say we're denying it. I mean, he's, he's insisting that it's part of our being transparent. He's insisting that we're withholding it. So I would just argue that we should release it to him in the interest of, of full transparency.
You mean, I'm looking good.
Is that a, is that a motion, Jeff?
Well, my motion is that we go ahead and, in anticipation of its existence, we, we vote to whether or not to release it to him as soon as we can.
There a second? All right. We don't have someone formally pulling the board, Ms. Rice, can you do that? Or Cynthia, I don't know what the, Hansel is not here tonight, so.
Glad to do that. Restate the motion. Motion's been made and properly seconded.
Yes, the motion, Ms. Hudson, is that we, if, if additional videos exist from citizens that they be released to the complaintant.
Well, that's this, this, yeah, okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chair, I am in line with your thinking and I think that you should go ahead and complete that thought.
You know what? Well, my thought was that he was looking for, he was looking for one particular video and not all the videos from third parties. And so he wants the video from the woman who is sitting up close in, in the restaurant. And that's the one that we're gonna look for. And if it, if it was not submitted, if it was submitted, he'll get it.
And then, Mr. Chair, you could simply ask if there's any objection to that, and that would be the pleasure of the board by consensus without a formal vote, unless you want a formal vote.
Is there any objection to that?
No objection. I just had one other question. Mr. Fogel indicated that the police department was withholding a video, and I wanted just to get clarity on that from Sergeant Wade or the chief, that they were withholding a video, that, that sort of had a stronger implication. Sergeant Wade, could you speak to that? Was there, was there an intentional denial of a request by Mr. Fogel to see a citizen-generated video?
I can't speak to any conversations between
I can make it easy. I have a letter I wrote to Lieutenant Gore specifically requesting that video.
If we, if, if
Some of it by asking the people who know what's going on, what's going on. And now I start to understand why it took two years to get to this point of even having a hearing.
So we will send you that video if it exists.
Did we agree by consensus, Mr. Chair?
I think we agreed by consensus, yes.
I want to make sure that your record accurately reflects that that is the consensus of the board. Sounds as if you have.
Yeah.
Or do we know that all the files? Because it sounds like we're saying we're gonna look through files that were given from the police department to see whether or not that video exists. It seems like it'd be, it would be a nice gesture of the police department to also look through. Unless we're going, unless we know we're a hundred percent looking through the same files. I know they gave us some files, but you know, it may, if they have their files saved by a date range and they simultaneously would just do another look and sweep through their, you know, because we may not be looking at a complete, completely the same sort, you know what I mean?
We have, we have better be looking at a complete record because that's what they're required to provide us. And if we don't find it, we will then ask
But we don't know whether it exists or not.
Right, exactly, exactly. And I, and I say my recollection is that they did not receive a file from that particularly, a, a video from that particular lady. But I want to be absolutely certain to confirm that. And if they did receive a video from that, that lady to make sure that it gets sent out. All right, any other? So I guess the, the, this all rose in the, in the context of the order of the hearing. And so what I, maybe what I suggest is that there be short periods for opening statements. And if people want to reserve their opening statements, that's fine, but just have it there. And then of evidence by the parties. I believe that a lot of, you know, we have right now have a situation in which the complainant is going first.
Mr. Chair, before we get in there, I just want to make it clear that you have the entire file of this incident. Am I correct, Sergeant Wade?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Just for the record.
It's, 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 it's a mother of a file. Yeah, but I think that since the a lot of the controversy in this case turns over, turns on the body worn camera footage, that it might be better in case of the presentation of evidence for the police department to go first. Because that might answer a lot of questions. And so, you know, we could start out, you know, I mean, the police department has access to these videos and, and the complainant doesn't. And so it will, might be very helpful to go in that order if there aren't any objections.
I just had a quick question for Sergeant Wade. Were you going to include, there was some telephone audio that we listened to from another witness. Is that included in your presentation?
No, my presentation is designed to just provide a brief overview. As Mr. Mendez pointed out, it is a lot of file, but I wanted to just touch on the bigger points during our presentation.
Yeah, I think Cynthia has, has drilled it into me that it's up to us to bring out the fine, the, the fine points. Ask the right questions during, during the actual hearing, so.
We'll present first, then is that the, the order?
If there is no objection from the parties, I see no reason not to do it that way. Okay, so I guess, Mr. Creasy, it kind of falls to you to revise the agenda and sort of change the order of, of the elements in it. Cynthia, how is that gonna work? I mean, we've already, we've already noticed the meeting. And so we just change the agenda or do we change the agenda while we're there?
You can call for a motion to amend the agenda at the beginning of the meeting in whatever manner that Mr. Creasy has decided to to, to change it from what's already been published. And you take up that motion and once the agenda's approved And you take up that motion, and once the agenda is approved as amended, you're in fine shape. And and just.
Would someone be able to forward to me the agenda as it exists?
Yes.
Published?
Yes.
And perhaps a a copy of the actual notice of the public hearing?
Yes, we can work with the executive director who makes sure those things happen to 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 make sure that you have those, Mr. Creasy. Am I correct, Chairman Diaz?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it. He's not, he's not in town, but he is available, so. Now, I know Cynthia or Pam, you raised the question at one point as to whether it would be a good idea for the hearing examiner to get an outline of the case and would consist, for example, of the complaint file, which is public and the closure letter, which is public. It's not much, but it would at least. Or is that a good idea?
Bill, can I say something?
Yes.
I guess you never read the letter I wrote to Hansel about how this transpired? I'll lay it out to you. I submitted that video to the police department. The police department construed that as a complaint. There was no written formal complaint. The police department responded to that, which only raised the issue of excessive force. Then the police department released the body cam of the officer involved, which raised a number of other issues. Mister Lieutenant Gore only responded to the video. And when I met with him, I explained to him what other issues were at stake in light of the video that had now been released by the police department. He never responded to that. So I take it what you're operating from is a video complaint and a closing letter which doesn't address the major issues in the case.
Does that mean?
What those are.
Does, does that mean you wish to withdraw your review request?
I'm sorry, were you talking to somebody?
Yes, I was. Look.
To me?
Please.
No.
Okay, you have to understand that our, you know, we have only the only thing we can do is evaluate the allegations in the in the complaint file.
No complaint was filed.
Okay, yeah, there was, because there's a complaint form, so it's been.
Didn't file any complaints.
Yes, well.
The police department investigated it as a complaint, will understand that Mr. Fogle didn't file a complaint form. Is that fair, Mr. Chairman Diaz?
I think it's fair, yes.
This is an accurate, it's accurate. You mean, you're not going to review the other issues that I brought to Lieutenant Gore's attention that he refused to respond to? Is that what you're saying?
Were they submitted, Mr. Fogle, in the form of a complaint?
Well, no, I, no, I remember, you know, he's, if, please, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fogle. Your concern was whether the individual, whether the policeman had any right or authority to ask the individual to leave the mall and whether he had any authority to threaten to arrest him and whether the charge of felony assault on a police officer was justified.
I'm sorry, you got it all.
Okay.
I was just afraid that since that. Formal complaint, you didn't know that, but that's yes, those are the issues.
So the the answer to your question is we can only address the allegations that are in the complaint. We can.
Address allegations that don't exist.
They do exist because they are investigated.
So you're not going to investigate the ones you just told me? You're not going to review them?
There is. We can comment on them in our, in our review report. But that's, that's the only, that's the only authority we have.
So if the police department decides, I come in and file a complaint, they said screw his complaint, put it in the garbage. I come to you, say, well, we can't review a complaint that we don't have or for which there wasn't a decision made, that's preposterous. The only reason I knew about those other issues was because I actually saw the video that the police department made public. Issues arose out of that, and I sat down with Lieutenant Gore, and I explained each of those issues, just as you have briefly summarized them. Lieutenant Gore, for whatever reason, chose not to conclude that in his closure letter. Now I'm bound by his closure letter? Because he didn't address the issues that I brought to his attention? Is that what you're saying?
What I suggest you do is during the hearing, you ask those exact questions and you'll get a public answer.
And Mr. Chair, might I, might I add that that can also be a part of the board's disposition, which includes questions of whether or not you agree that the police investigation was complete or sufficient, and it sounds as though Mr. Fogle is raising issues regarding completeness or lack thereof, and that would be something that is properly before the board as an evidentiary issue and a factual matter for you to decide.
Yeah, so if we believe that the, for example, the allegations do not fit the acts of the police officer, we can say that, and we can disagree with that the investigate, the investigation was not complete.
But but of course, that's on the other side of, that's on the other side of your assessment of the evidence put for you in terms of your assessment of credibility and and all the other factors that go into your deliberations, but certainly in my estimation, and obviously, Mr. Mr. Creasy weigh in during during the hearing, that sounds as though Mr. Fogle's allegations would be properly before the board as a matter of evidentiary determination.
So again, I think, Fogle, you know, whether or not you choose to make an opening statement or simply choose to present evidence, you can make these questions abundantly clear at the hearing.
Okay.
You can ask them directly to the representative of the police department.
In writing.
Yes.
Personally delivered to the hearing officer.
Yes, we might have someone, we have an intern do it, you know.
Make sure they're wearing gloves, because I will.
Okay, very good. So are there any other questions or concerns related to the hearing that anyone wishes to raise at this point?
Yes, in my letter to the executive director, I raised an issue about the recusal of Mr. Brown and Mr. Frater, I think that's how he pronounces his name. Are you going to address that tonight, or ignore it, or consider it at the time of the hearing? Seems to me to be a waste at the time of the hearing, but it's your decision.
No, it's actually not my decision, on the advice of counsel, it's the decision of the individuals involved as to whether they should recuse themselves.
And my request was if they didn't, that the board take action.
The board, they have not chosen to recuse themselves. And we have no action that is within our purview under the current ordinance.
But you had two people with integrity who recused themselves and two people without integrity who refused to recuse themselves despite their hostility towards me, and in one instance, efforts to destroy my income. Is that the case of the board decide decision?
I've answered the question.
You think that Mr. Brown and Mr. Frater are people of integrity when it comes to the issue of whether or not they have hostility towards me and therefore will be biased against me? You have no opinion. I know, you have no opinion about most anything, Bill. Okay, I understand that, and I understand you're afraid of them. But that's what we're stuck with, so I will make.
Mr. Fogle. Mr. Fogle.
Mr. Mendez.
Yes. Mr. Fogle.
Mr. Mendez.
Stops with personal insults or.
Oh, I only received them from your board members. You know better, Bill, you're the one who made the motion to hold him to a vote of no confidence in Mr. Brown because of what he did, and then you chickened out.
Let us move on.
Mr. Chair, I would like to I guess, point out or ascertain how a hearing could be conducted with two, only two members and proceed in a manner that's, that's fair and judicious, that's rhetorical.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think if if five of us need to recuse ourselves, five of us need to recuse ourselves. So, but, you know, we all are individually responsible for making those decisions. Period. As it stands right now, we still have a quorum.
Does Mr. Creasy have a say in whether it's appropriate for those two gentlemen to be sitting in judgment of my complaint? Or is that solely a matter for the board to determine whether or not they're being fair?
I, with the, with, you know, backstop from counsel, recusal still is a personal choice. Board members can be removed for malfeasance and, you know, failing to maintain confidentiality of information. But that's done by the city, that's done by the city council.
So they're in the Clarence Thomas school of, I don't recuse myself just because I have bias.
Mr. Chair, i- if I could, since Mr. Fogle called my integrity into question, I don't know the man, I've never spoken to him, I've never seen him face to face. I have, in forty years, as a forensic psychologist, been an expert witness in hundreds of trials with lawyers I like, with lawyers I dislike, there was never a question of bias, there was never a question of my integrity. And so I can assure you, Mr. Fogle, that you will get a fair hearing from me, and you need not worry about whatever you've imagined to be this conspiracy of bias against you, it doesn't exist.
My imagination is in black and white, Mr. Frater, and you know it. You have seen the emails that you sent to your buddy Bellamy Brown, you have seen the letter that you sent to Harold Foley. You've seen all of this, and you know the truth. So let's not cover the truth. If you want to make an assertion that you'll be fair notwithstanding your hostility, you can make that assertion. Whether you'll be fair or not, we'll see at the end.
Well, if the implication is that I'm only fair if I rule in your favor, I have no idea how I'm going to rule, then, you know, that that doesn't.
That's your implication, not mine.
That's not our mission, so.
It's your implication that you made up, not one that I stated.
Yeah, okay.
Let us move on.
That's all I have to say, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Anything else by from any of the parties?
Okay, I will make one, one final point with respect to the recusal matters. I, I believe it'll certainly in the board's purview and in consultation with Mr. Creasy as the hearing examiner to perhaps take up, whether in writing or by testimony or offering of evidence, a basis for the recusal motions that Mr. Fogle has 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 made. You're absolutely correct in observing that these are decisions of the individuals whose recusal is sought to make an assessment as to whether or not they believe that they can objectively make a disposition in 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 this case, but to the extent to the extent that remains a question following this proceeding, Mr. Fogle may wish to have a record to preserve around those issues, so again, I put that out there for due process purposes. And again, leave that to the board and Mr. Creasy to decide whether or not they require any further information or whether or not any further information needs to be a part of the record, I should say, with respect to those issues.
Mr. Fogle, is the basis for your grounds for recusal fully contained in the emails that you've sent to the board so far?
No, but I'm not going to waste my time trying to convince either Mr. Brown and Mr. Frater of that which they already know. I have many more important things to do.
No, I assume you do not wish to add any, anything more to the record.
The record is a wide record that goes beyond the board. I don't wish to add anything to that broader record.
Thank you. So I guess our action items are one, to provide Mr. Creasy with the agenda and the announce the notice and to have him adjust the agenda, amend the agenda to his liking. And the second action item is for us to ascertain the whether there exists a video from the particular lady sitting in the first row of the restaurant, and if so, to provide it to Mr. Fogle. Anything else that we need to be doing at this point?
You'd made mention of sending me also the complaint to the, there obviously is a letter or some documents serving as the complaint that was investigated, and then the letter of findings.
Was that, so Cynthia, do you think that's a?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the.
He was, he was asking about getting a copy of the complaint form and the the closure letter.
Mr. Creasy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, we'll make sure you get those, Mr. Creasy.
Thank you.
James?
Is it too, is it not, would it not be something that Mr. Creasy should get if he was, if he was to get the any video or anything also, or is he, is that too, too much actual specific? I don't know. Case or any information or? Just.
That's up to the board.
Yeah, I, I believe it would be better, it would be better if he hears the evidence as it is presented in in the hearing.
All right. I was asking for, I understood that the the complaint letter and the closure letter were already public documents.
I don't know that that's true.
Oh, but I heard mentioned that those, those are already public documents.
I, I did hear that, but I, I think we might have been speaking, and I don't want to speak for who said that, but I believe you were speaking to the fact that those items have been disclosed to the board in connection with its work in this matter, but I don't think they've had any broader, any public disclosure as such, am I correct, Chief?
Yeah, they may have just been sent to the, to the parties.
Well, well, the, the final disposition letter, but not the complaint certainly, Mr. Fogle is saying that he did not file for complaint, so I don't know how public that is. I can't speak to that, I would imagine he would have gotten the simple disposition letter, the closure letter, though, yes, right.
That's correct. You could ask me, and I could tell you.
Yes.
But you're reluctant to even ask me, I don't understand what goes on.
I'll, I'll ask you, Mr. Fogle, do you have? You have a complaint, complaint letter that you made, right?
There was no complaint letter, I was given a copy of the so-called disposition letter.
And and my apologies, I was probably thinking more of the the summer summarization, the summary of the investigations, what I'm thinking is not public, but the disposition letter would have been sent to to Mr. Fogle, excuse me.
Well, we can check.
As a hearing examiner, I. As a hearing examiner, I with, I, I don't want to go deeper than appropriate, and I don't think there's actually a precedent for this board and the utilization of a hearing examiner, but as I sit here during the pre-hearing conference we're having today, I, I, I feel a little bit as the one person on the screen who knows the, the, the least. And when I walk into the room on Thursday, I'd like to have at least a little bit uh, not a, anything, now, if there's a closure, I thought the closure letter, and I thought there would be a letter or some document of some sort that constituted a complaint that would sketch out what, what the public hearing is going to even entail. If that, if that's not the case, then don't send it to me. If it is the case, please send it to me.
As I understand it, the complaint file was drafted by Lieutenant Gore in response to the email sent by Jeff Fogel, and apparently it did not address the issues that Mr. Fogel wants it to address. On the other hand, it does contain a short precis of the event. And so if it turns out not to be confidential, I think it would be a reasonable thing to send it.
Perhaps you should ask whether or not there are any objections from anyone involved, police department, Mr. Fogel, with Mr. Creasy having a copy of the complaint and the disposition notice.
I have no objection.
Any objections from anyone else?
Uh, so my recollection is that there are, I guess you could say, two official complaints and one not a complaint. There is in one of them, they actually do use the, the complaint form, and I believe the other two were sent via email.
Yeah, so we will be talking about the, the complaint form.
I don't have any objections to send it in there.
Okay. So you get the twenty thousand foot.
Thank you.
Over you. So I guess, Mr. Creasy, do you have any other concerns, issues you would like to raise before we? But actually, you're the one that adjourns, so.
Oh, well. In looking at the hearing examiner's role, one item that I, I think was mentioned is just simply ascertaining and exploring the possibility of some type of informal resolution of the issue short of the public hearing, if there's some satisfactory resolution. I certainly have a lot of experience in facilitating that sort of thing. If that is even at, at least feasible, I, I would just mention it. It may not be appropriate in this case, but I just mention it as a possible element to my role.
Well, I tried with the police department. I got nowhere, but if Chief Duretti, Durett has a different idea, I'd be happy to sit down with him or anyone else.
I, I only mention it as something that's on the continuum of what I believe my role could, could have, and that it's not a directive, it's not even a recommendation at this point. I'm just bringing it up as a matter that I would bring up in almost any instance.
Um, can I get back with you on that before the hearing day? Is that feasible?
As far as I'm concerned, yes, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, you're allowed to propose informal right up to the point where the board makes its findings. So. But that would be a great breakthrough if that were, if that were possible.
And I don't know to the extent, I, I think it's sort of a, that yours truly has virtually no context or history with this matter.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Except for what's transpired over about the last hour and a half. So I'm here. Simply, I'm gonna make that known, so that's, I don't have anything else to add. And if you're handing the gavel to me to adjourn us, I will ask for anyone to raise their hands if they may not have a consensus for that at this point. Seeing no hands and hearing no voices, I'll consider the today's pre-hearing adjourned then. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Night, all.
Good night.